Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting in the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, November ninth, and we've, for the record, all three commissioners are present, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Giffens.
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin, and we reaffirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. I have a motion to change the agenda to table item A and to add item F. Item F will be the settlement agreement, approval of the settlement agreement for Sands and Sands.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you. I just want to take a quick moment and thank everybody who worked at the elections yesterday. I want to thank everybody who voted, and I want to give a big shout out to everybody who ran. Some amazing campaigns out there, a lot of hard work, and just getting the word out to our residents is so important. And win or lose, congratulations to everybody who ran for office and, and we're really, we're really grateful of your willingness to do that. So I just wanted to put that out there to begin with. So next, we have a department update with Ms. Kelly. Good morning.
Good morning. COVID-19 remains stable across the state at this time. Confirmed cases are trending downwards. Omicron BA5 continues to be the majority of cases. Observations suggest that BQ1 and BQ1.1 may be more transmissible, but they are not known to currently cause more severe illness. Hospitals are continuing to see large number of cases of RSV. There is no real specific treatment at this time, and vaccines are in development, and they are thinking potentially sometime next year for those to be released.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I was hoping you would give the phone number again of where, of the clinic where people can go get their vaccines.
Sure, absolutely. Eight one two three three four eight three seven four.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I don't either. Thank you again for all your hard work and for your staff as well. All right. Is there any other department that has an update to offer? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to our next agenda item, which is public comment. These, this is a time for the public to make commentary on items that are not on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. At two minutes and thirty seconds, you will hear a tone, and at that point, you have thirty seconds to complete your statement. The three-minute time limit also applies to each of our agenda items. And we will start at the NatU Hill Room, but if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Mr. M. G., good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Distinguished Staff. First, I want to just echo Commissioner Thomas's comments around campaigns and elections, anybody running for office. I have sincere respect for that, the commitment it takes. It all deserves just a moment where we just kind of say thank you for doing that, because elections are vital to making this democracy work. Today, I want to bring, bring briefly about the Monroe Justice Response Committee. I cannot say enough on how important this committee is to the future of our community. The issue affects everyone from Steinsville to Ellisville. Not only is it looking forward, but assessing what came before us. I heard on Monday's meeting that this is not the eighties, we need to look at criminal justice in a new light, and I cannot agree more. Also brought up was collaboration at the last meeting, both in public comment at the city council meeting as well. And I want to echo the sentiment that the county does not need to hear from me or another unit of government on how to do this important work. Backseat drivers are not helpful during this excursion. This journey requires real cooperation to deal with the issue that is the criminal justice system. That said, continuing with the word collaboration, it begins with the work of the county government and its department. Communication is essential in how we govern. When in doubt, connect with your colleagues, whether that is the county council, probation, or the sheriff's department. When I hear certain frustration uttered in public meetings by our elected officials, I cannot help but think maybe the process was the issue. Silos, egos, territorial battles can creep up crippling government and even business organizations. The work of the Justice Response Committee is akin to a therapy session. A successful session requires all parties to be honest, to look at what Monroe County is doing well and where we need improvement. It demands one enter the meeting with a holistic approach that goes beyond your particular cog in the wheel. I stand before you as someone who wants government to work. Even when I may believe this initiative or that initiative is a bridge to nowhere, there's nothing more than I like being wrong on these issues. The chamber leaves in good, efficient, transparent government. The business community wants to help in any way we can during this process, which brings up to a quick plug that I brought up last week, which is our community conversation, which is Tuesday. Commissioner Jones will be on that panel. It'll be at the Elks Lodge starting at eleven thirty. We still have a few seats opening for that, but it'll give the public a real chance to hear where that committee is and where it's sort of moving forward, because it is a vital issue that we do need input from the public to be engaged on. I thank you for your time today, Commissioners.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to offer public comment for an item not on our agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item, please.
All right, move approval of the minutes from November second, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, edits?
I had one that I sent to Anita, and she took care of it immediately, so.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes for November second, twenty twenty-two signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of claims docket accounts payable November ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Ms. Letler here from the auditor's office. Good morning.
Good morning. Accounts payable for November ninth, twenty twenty-two is one million one hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-four cents.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I had had a question about a couple of items, but they've been answered, so I appreciate that.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving claims docket accounts payable November ninth, twenty twenty-two signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. We've tabled item A, so we will move on to item B, please.
Move approval of memorandum of understanding with Community Foundation of Bloomington and Monroe County. Fund name, American Rescue Act, fund number eighty-nine fifty, and an amount of forty-two thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. I don't know which of you wishes to, you're both pointing at each other. Who will speak about this item?
Well, this is a almost housekeeping matter. We have added this to our plan. We, the county council has appropriated money, and really, the work has been done. This is a, was a program that was to develop to help pre-kindergarten children enter kindergarten and ameliorate some of the socialization effects of the COVID-19 emergency. This is just the MOU with the Community Foundation so that we can reimburse them for their expenses.
Thank you so much. Did you want to add anything, Ms. Verdi? Okay, all right. Comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I'm really proud of the fact that we were able to respond to the lags that we envision young children having because of COVID, and so I'm really proud of being part of a group that would take this on.
Yeah. Commissioner Jones?
I'm also very pleased about this. It's a very needed effort, and I'm also very pleased to see that there are people who are still working on the consequences of COVID, even as everyone else is trying to go back to normal.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I do think this is an amazing program, and it was great that this was brought to us, and appreciate that effort. And this has probably had a big impact on our community that we don't even know about, so very happy to support this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none. All those in favor approving the MOU with Community Foundation of Bloomington and Monroe County signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Move approval of Financial Solutions Group agreement regarding GO bond and edit bond in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, and this is twenty-five thousand for each agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, the creation and marketing of our bond instruments are, is a task that Financial Solutions Groups has done for many years. This year, we have two different lendings going through. One is the bond anticipation note for the Fulton Pike project or the, or other justice facility, if that one does not work. The other is a general obligation bond. These are twenty-five thousand each, and I will say that I expect they're going to have to do a whole lot more work this year in stirring the market to get the rate down than they have in the past. So that, these are two agreements. One is for, for each of those lendings.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thanks.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
And, and these are paid basically out of the bond themselves?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, excellent. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the agreement with Financial Solutions Group regarding GO bond and edit bond signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Item D, please.
Move to approve ASI Inc. Service Agreement Amendment Number One, an amount that increases the agreement by three hundred and sixty dollars per month.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, and this is the First Amendment, because we just approved the agreement, I believe, earlier this year. Historically, we used to have a few different agreements with ASI to cover all our buildings. This change is due to the fact that we move our highway personnel out to the highway garage, and therefore, there is an increased in cleaning cost for that, for that building. We had it at two hours a week, and we think it was going to take them just over three and a half hours a week to, to do the cleaning in that building.
Okay, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I don't have any questions either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the agreement with ASI Inc. Facilities, sorry, Facility Service Agreement Amendment Number One signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Item, please.
Move approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-six regarding the Convention Center.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, and you should have before you an ordinance forty-six that is creating a capital improvement board. This is very similar to the ordinance that we were working on in two thousand nineteen. There have been a few changes. Clearly, we put some language in the whereas clauses that dealt with the delay due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We also put some language in there about the, the possibility of state legislation that would impact the ability to bond. So I think those are a couple of changes. For the most part, I think that is, we're still talking about the same makeup where the county would have three appointments, the city would have three appointments to the sever member board, and that those six would decide the seventh member. It still prohibits, you know, county elected officials, county employees, and really anybody on a, on a board that would materially, what it would, we would think in all likelihood would have funding towards this project from that board. We want to make sure that we have clear lanes and separate voices throughout the project. We do have in here a deadline of January one, twenty twenty-three for the city to determine whether they're on board with this. This ordinance actually would not take effect until the city has, had committed that this is a good idea. And again, this is kind of a step in the process if, with trying to keep the, the project moving along and, you know, understanding that there is some kind of urgency, at least our understanding from potential legislation from the state. So that's kind of this, and then maybe a bigger background, a CIB is a capital improvement board. This would be designed to oversee the property that is the current convention center and the expected expanded areas to the convention center. Currently, some of those areas are in use for other purposes, and we understand that, you know, that'll have to be figured out as well. But this is kind of the step. If we're going to go down the CIB route, we need to form the CIB. It, again, it's not effective until the, the city of Bloomington says, hey, this is the route we want to go. So that's kind of this in a nutshell. I know that there's a lot of CIB kind of ideas out there that I haven't covered. So if you have any questions about those, I'm more than happy to do my best.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, but I do appreciate all the hard work that Mr. Cockrell and others have done on this.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I'm pleased to be taking this action and very much hope that the city will feel that it's, I should say, the city administration will feel that it would be beneficial to move ahead in this way. We do not want to see the possibility of expanding the convention center disappear, but we do want to be able to work cooperatively and collaboratively with the city.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I have some comments to offer, but I think I'd like to hear public comment first. It looks like we have County Counselor Peter Iverson on Zoom. If anyone in NatU Hill wants to speak, please come to the podium as well to, to speak next. Counselor Iverson?
Yes, Commissioners, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm battling a cold, so I do apologize, the raspiness of the voice. I, I encourage you to vote for this as the current council liaison to the convention and visitors' center board. I work very closely with those who are currently operating our convention center, and I have a front row seat to how important this vote is. We are currently having multiple organizations from around our state and region who want to come to Monroe County. They want to bring their members here to Monroe County. They want to enjoy our restaurants. They want to enjoy our hotels, and we're just not, we don't have facilities to facilitate that. So I think today's, what you have before you is a very important step. I think, as noted, it does also show that we are serious to moving forward and that it shows that we want to be using the public's tax dollars in a way that is commensurate with growth in our community that impacts everybody. So I encourage you to approve this, and I thank you for bringing this forward.
All right, thank you so much, Counselor Iverson. We appreciate the commentary. Does anybody else have public comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'm just going to offer a few notes. This plan has emerged out of being at the crossroads of efforts to negotiate, the failure to negotiate, and we really, it really came down to having to select one of three paths. One is hand assets over to the city administration that we've held for decades and stewarded for decades and maintained for decades and are very proud of the work of our predecessors who got this project going and kept it going and have done a great job before us. And we don't have an interest in walking away. So option one is off the table. So then we move on to option two. Option two is creating the capital improvement board. This is something, as Mr. Cockrell noted, we've been discussing for years. COVID interrupted it. Yes, that happens, happened to a lot of things. But here's why a capital improvement board is preferred. There is tort claim protection, which is automatically provided. That is not provided when you have a FOGO one C three. The capital improvement board meetings are public. They must follow the open door law, and we have seen indications that, well, we will, from the city administration, that they will follow the guidance of this, and they would have public meetings and would advertise the budget publicly. And if that's the case, then a CIB seems to be the way to go. The capital improvement board also helps ensure a diverse leadership group rather than the promise of one, and it ensures that the, the budget is public, and it's not the promise of offering a public budget. And the reason we're concerned is because as the county council was considering passing the food and beverage tax twenty eighteen, there was a memorandum sent from the city administration and city council, which advocated for the food and beverage tax, asked the county council to pass it, and pledged their willingness and their commitment to work collaboratively with the county on this project. And so is, is this recent memo another promise of the same? Can we count on it? And it's important to note that the capital improvement board is a structure that was created by the state legislature specifically for this kind of purpose, and it is used in other counties with convention center expansions. If the city chooses to go along and pursue a five oh one C three, there's a few things that I think are worth noting. First is, there appears to be a assumption on the part of the city administration that the inkeeper's tax dollars would automatically flow to the city administration side of the convention center. There is a convention center that already exists, and every year, the county council makes a decision about how to allocate inkeeper tax funding. So I think assuming the funding is going one way or another may not be wise. If the city administration is intent on proceeding on their own with the five oh one C three, we will, as the county pledge to the public here, that we will plan to proceed with building a hotel, developing a hotel, and will add space and renovations to the existing convention center. And these things would likely require that we issue a revenue bond based on inkeeper's tax revenue. And we would, if this happens, we just want to say that we hope and expect that the city would treat the hotel as a amenity that serves both centers. Sadly, we've learned what collaboration has meant to the city administration. It means hand over your resources, your land, your money, and the city administration will make the decision. And that's not how county government operates. We take our stewardship of taxpayer dollars very seriously and the resources of the taxpayers very seriously. It's clear to us that the city does not trust the county commissioners and has been working to encourage the county council to pretend that a five oh one C three is a structure for a separate city convention center is in the best interest of the taxpayers of Monroe County. However, we do trust the city council, and we do trust the county council to do the right thing. They will have to make a decision about whether or not the city administration should proceed with the five oh one C three structure. What we have for, with us today, this ordinance, is the only viable alternative for expanding the convention center. This is because it ensures that the process of managing a public building with taxpayer dollars has the full transparency, public meetings and public accounting tax dollars that a capital improvement board requires. Now, the city administration has made its intentions clear in the recent past, saying, we're just going to go it alone. And this is led me personally to think that, well, my initial reaction was, well, then let them do that, and we'll do our bit and, and work on our side of it. But I remembered that those two things, that the city had pledged to be collaborative to county council before the food and beverage tax was passed by a vote of four three. And I also know that transparency is so important to me as a principle of government, that the right thing to do, I think, is to approve this today for the sake of public transparency. So all of this to make it clear to the public, to the city council members and our county council members, that the options and the choices between a five oh one C three and a capital improvement board are very clear. That's, that's where I'm at, and that's why I will support this ordinance. Do my colleagues have anything else they want to add?
I just want to point out that we are not opposed to expanding the convention center, even though that's been some of the rumor that has been going around at this point. And I want to, I want to debunk that.
Thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, when I was on the council, I was actually one of the people who voted against the food and beverage tax. It had, it was not in any way because I didn't support the convention center. I simply didn't think that that was the appropriate funding for it. I still support the convention center. I want to see it improve and be made the best thing we can in Monroe County, but we need to be able to work collaboratively.
Thank you so much. All right. With that, I'm going to do a call for a voice vote on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-six regarding the convention center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes three zero. Now we have item F, please.
Move approval of Sands and Sands settlement agreement?
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is a settlement agreement with Sands and Sands property. This is due to a zoning issue. This settlement has been reviewed by our plan department's executive committee and approved it, and they recommend approval. The, I guess, the end of the day outcome is this, the Sands Group would be paying fifteen hundred dollars plus, plus the court costs. The, I guess the end of the day outcome is this was the Sands Group would be paying fifteen hundred dollars plus the court costs for this case.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I don't either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the agreement with Sands and Sands signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. All right, we don't have any appointments today. Just a reminder that Friday is Veterans Day. Thank you, veterans who have served us in the past and are currently serving us. There is a Veterans Day ceremony planned at the American Legion Post eighteen on Friday, November eleventh, from ten thirty AM to noon at eighteen hundred West Third Street. And the next blood drive is also on Friday, ten AM to three at Ivy Tech, Shu Paul. Go to redcross.org to sign up. There's also another blood drive coming up in December, Thursday, December fifteenth, ten AM to three, and Friday, December sixteenth, one PM to six PM. Just a reminder for everyone that now is a great time to apply to serve on one of our boards or commissions. And go to co.munro.in.us to get more information and to complete the form online. And a reminder as well that every month we hold open office hours via Zoom for anyone in the community who wishes to make a suggestion or has some commentary to offer us on county government. And those six times a month are listed on the calendar at co.munro.in.us. So please join us. We look forward to the conversation. And just to note, of course, that county government is closed on Friday because of Veterans Day. Anything else you wish to add, Commissioner Giffens?
No. Oh, well, actually, I want to thank everybody who worked at the polls. It was a huge undertaking. It's a long, long day. I was talking to a friend last night who said, yeah, she was up at four AM yesterday so that she could be out of one of the far reaches of the county. So job well done.
Yeah, it is a lot of work and it's a it can be a taxing job in some ways and in other ways. It's the long day that does it too, you know, it's a twelve hour day plus picking up and setting up plus dropping off the ballots. It's it's a long day.
It's fourteen, fifteen hour day easily.
Yeah, so huge thanks to those folks who do that. Commissioner Jones?
I concur with everything that's been said.
Thank you. All right, we do have a noon work session with the with the group, including members of the city administration, city council and county council and ourselves. So we're going to come back at noon for our work session. Anything else I missed? All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.